Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, December 18th, 2017 Medfield School Committee Meeting. On the agenda, for purposes of the minutes, we were just in an executive session to discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if in an open meeting it may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. On the agenda tonight, we'll start with public input. We have approval of the minutes from December 4th, 2017. For new business, originally on the agenda, we had the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey Presentation, which Susan Cowell was going to do, but we're going to table that until the January meeting because of a family emergency. So we'll do that at our January meeting. And I don't believe we have any other items since posting on December 14th.
No, Madam Chair.
For old business, we have the new grant procedure follow-up. We have the student activity, the policy, the first reading, and we have donations. We have the superintendent's report to the committee, in which he'll discuss the fiscal year 19 initial budget, the Dale Street Project update, the Director of Student Services update, and district recognition. Future agenda items will include the fiscal year 19 budget, the high school handbook revisions, the student activity policy, and the new grant procedure. And do we have anyone for public input that wants to speak? Jerry?
It's a packed house tonight. Jerry Potts, 7 Curve Street. So four or five meetings ago, I think, we were talking about the student stress and SEL, and it's great to see that there's a lot of efforts being done to address that. I was looking forward to Susan's presentation tonight. At the four or five meetings ago, I talked about our teachers. And after that meeting, Chris and I were going home, and as much as this is one of the highest rated shows on Medfield TV, the school committee, you know, they're probably getting residuals and, you know, off of YouTube. Me saying in front of 20 or 30 people and the 30 people who see it online, you know, Chris and I were sort of, you know, how could we do an outreach that would be a little bit more? And so Chris, being the idea person she is, came up with this idea of doing posters, which you may have seen around town. "We're thankful Medfield teachers, the heart of our schools." And immediately, 100 people reached out for that. And if you go on Concerned Citizens, which is usually, there's some animated discussions there, let's just put it that way. This was something that universally, 160 people either liked or loved. And for Concerned Citizens, I think that's a record, right? Unless it was a kid who posted it. And I wanted to read just quickly a comment that Richard De Sorga put there, which was, "Thanks for doing this. Teachers' efforts are often out of sight, out of mind. Your efforts are appreciated." I really wanted to start with this because I think, you know, at the heart of our schools, and that's what the sign says, it really is that relationship between the community and the teachers. And, you know, I think it's critical at this time, you know, with everything and all the negativity, that we actually, when you see the LCB signs and Hostile 40B, and to just put something out that actually the community can feel good about. And I start with that because unfortunately, it's gotten back to us that some people view this as some kind of political statement. And, you know, I think anyone who knows Chris and I, we are more than willing to stand up at any meeting and say what we think when it comes to politics. Certainly not shy on that front. This was disappointing because it was really done with one goal: As a community, thank you for the teachers. Our kids have gone through 18 years of public school, all three kids. The impact that those teachers have made on our kids' lives, I can't even quantify. And to have a junior daughter who comes home every night, literally 15 or 20 minutes, and those of you who have junior kids, they don't talk a lot to you, but when they come home for 15 or 20 minutes and just go on and on about Mr. Burrows and the things they're talking about at school and the, you know, the passion for and love of learning, that's the reason, that's the reason we did those signs. My brother's been a teacher at Dover Sherburne for 41 years. We have neighbors and friends who teach. It's unfortunately a thankless task. Now, the last thing I'll say is I teach at Boston College, and I know Dr. Marsden has some Boston College roots as well, and I've been fortunate to teach for six years. Two years after one of my students graduated, they contacted me because they wanted to have a cup of coffee with me. And I sat down with her, and I said, "Okay, you know, how can I help you?" I figured she's networking for a job. And she said, "You know, when I graduated from B.C., you talked a lot about passion and doing something you're passionate about that can make a difference. And, you know, I'm two years out, and I went into the business world, and I have no passion for this." And I said, "Well, what would you like to do?" And she said, "I want to teach." And I said, "Wow, you'd be an amazing teacher. Like, that's really cool. You're a great student. You're passionate about that. So what's the problem?" Well, my parents, spending $65,000 a year to send me to B.C., don't want me to be a teacher because I can't make a living doing it. Really? Like, to have someone that talented, that creative, that amazing, who can make a difference on people's lives, feeling the financial pressure of what teaching is today, it's a long, long, thankless job in a lot of ways. So 100 signs out on the streets, that is woefully inadequate to say thank you to the teachers. So I just want to, you know, publicly say, it's for all of you who have posted those signs, and I think we're, you know, we're sold out at this point, but we'll go back to press on it. You know, I just wanted to publicly say how much we appreciate what the teachers do for our kids. We only have a limited window with two more years, but, you know, I feel blessed that we've been part of this community because of that, and to the administration for supporting them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Does anyone else have anything for public input or anything that they want to add tonight?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hearn. I spoke on one of the October School Committee meetings. And at that time, I addressed the school committee about my concerns about class size, and we had an open discussion about that. I know the school committee is making steps to help reduce class sizes for the lower grades, and, you know, people in town greatly appreciate that.
The mic doesn't, the mic is just for the TV. It doesn't, so if you can just pick up-
Does it not work?
It doesn't work for us. It's just for TV, so I-
I'll do the best I can. Okay, so I know you guys have, you listened, and I'm very thankful for that, and you were listening before I even had mentioned anything at School Committee to parent concerns about the class sizes and the incoming class sizes coming to town. So my, I just want to make sure I'm clear in my understanding, and I know you're going to go over the budget, but I just wanted to say this at the beginning, in case people had to leave or had questions that you might be able to answer. You had mentioned the hiring of one new teacher for K1 and 2. Is that correct?
One, two, three.
One, two, and three. K1, two, and three.
No, one, two, and three.
One, two, and three.
Right now, yeah.
Okay. So that would, if no new children came in, let's just take the class of 2029, for example, who have 25 per class right now, the current first grade, it would reduce the class number to 22. That is assuming that no new children come to town, correct? Am I, I just want to make sure I'm giving, understanding everything.
It assumes that the, it's based on the enrollment projections.
Okay, so the same company could get the projections last year, but we're 100 students off, which caused the over-
Sometimes they're about, I agree. Yeah, absolutely. NesNek is not great at what they're doing.
But no, it's fine. It's fine. I know you didn't do them. You hired someone else who, just checking. So the reason why I ask, because I want to follow up, I already asked this question, but I just would like to know if you guys have time to congregate and make a decision about this, is if the hiring of one new teacher addresses the current class size, reducing it by three students for, let's say, the 2029 class, and another 100 students move to town again above the projections, you know, it's, we don't want to repeat the same mistake twice. So what is the plan so that the class sizes don't increase even more with the addition of those students that might come to town, which probably will come to town because your schools are doing great, you know, in terms of rankings? I mean, my, so what I'm asking as a parent, is like, I know you have your numbers, and if you base your budget on your numbers, I get that you have a lot of financial demands pulling you in different directions, I completely get that, too. But is there any way that maybe you could perhaps consider the additional two teachers for each grade to reduce that? 22 is not a small class. It's more manageable than 25, but it's not a small class size. The class size policy posted this morning, 4K through 1, recommends 18 to 20 kids per class. And of course, that's a recommendation, not a requirement, and the schools and the school committee, you know, we elected everyone to help voice our concerns and support us. And I think it's a collective concern of all the parents who showed up tonight, that 22 is still large. And if you're saying, "We're going to reduce it so that it's 22," well, it's going to be higher than 22. And you guys, you have to know that. You have to know the projections are going to be higher. And so what's going to happen is more students will come to town, and then the teachers are going to still have more students than 22. They won't have 22. So is there any way, and I don't know if you included this in your budget projections because you haven't gone over it yet, if after tonight you hear anyone else who would like to say anything regarding large class size and concerns, I'd encourage you to say something so that budgets can be revised or our voices could be heard, and maybe consider the additional salaries. And I understand it's a difficult position for you, especially because you have teacher contracts coming up. I completely get that. But one of the concerns I also have with teacher contract negotiations is something that kind, like, it's really tough for teachers, especially a K teacher, to have 25 kids in a classroom. I can't imagine that's going to make them feel like-
You don't have a K, you don't have a K, but you're 25, though.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, first grade. Thank you. That's taxing. That's challenging, and, you know-
If you decide to get rid of half-day kindergarten, then you will have 25 kids in each classroom. Because Mrs. Nogier has 25 kids-
You know what, we're just, and we can stay here all night and have everyone, but we just have to have people go to the microphone for the TV. It's not for any other reason. Because we could have a great back and forth, but we just can't, because the TV's not going to pick up you and her, so. But you'll have your turn, I promise.
So I just wanted to follow up with the question I had before. Is there any way that we could ask the board and committee, the town, whatever we can do for a few more salaries, for four more salaries, for 3, 2, 1, maybe K? But I, so that's one question. The second question is, I understand the structural limitations of Memorial School. Chris Morrison, during that October 16th meeting, you asked to put that physical limitation question on the agenda of a school committee. Have you guys discussed that yet?
It's coming up in the context of the Dale Street. As you probably know, and as we've talked about, and we'll talk about it in more detail tonight, the MSBA has invited us to, the next phase, that's their term, invited us to talk about Dale Street and what we would do there.
Okay.
And one of, I think the physical plant is the biggest limitation, just from speaking for myself. We can't add two or three teachers at Memorial without getting rid of the art room, the music room, a bunch of other, you know, specialized classes for specific kids with disabilities. You'd end up, there's just not enough space there. And so, and the MSBA really wants us to talk about a longer-term approach to that, so that's all part of that whole, you know, it's an overall discussion that we'll have.
Okay.
And try to restructure, you know, the way we allocate our school billings.
So there's a short-term plan, and there should be a short-term plan and a long-term plan. So the long-term plan will be discussed during that meeting. What about a short-term plan for next year? What happens-
We discuss in our presentation, but I can answer you now if you want.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. That's all right. I just, I wasn't sure what was going to be in the presentation, and I wanted to, I didn't want to repeat what you're saying, but I just wanted to make sure things are discussed.
That your voice is heard.
Sure.
Because this is my only chance to speak. So that was a concern, you know, whether we could afford mobile portable classrooms, even if it's for one or two years, or until you guys figure out your long-term plan. You know, I'm just asking that if you need our support, we are here to support you, like, to get whatever funding that we need to make sure our classes remain small, because I don't think anyone in this room moved to town in the past six years expecting class sizes of 22 or more, thinking 22 is okay. I'm pretty sure everyone moved to town thinking there were going to probably be 20 or under children, especially in the lower grades. Now, it's, you know, unforeseen population growth, but now we know it's growing, it's happening, it's not going away, it's getting bigger. You have large-scale issues to address, long-term, but we need to address it short-term, like, for next year, with the budget that's going to be proposed. So please, you know, if there's something we can do, please tell us, okay? Because we do support you, but I think we're going to have a lot of frustrated people if full-day kindergartens are taken away in order to deal with that space issue, you know? There's just a lot of stresses for elementary school parents. And I'm sorry, I'm not really being articulate anymore because I owe my people.
That's okay. Thank you, thank you.
So just to address that before we start our meeting, I think even what Jerry said about the teachers, the class sizes, the stress on teachers of having that many, I think, you know, I think I could fairly speak on behalf of the board, that the reason why we've, most of us have been on this committee for many, many years, are the same reasons that both of you articulated. We believe in the schools, we believe in the teachers. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be volunteering, you know, every other Monday night here for years and years if we didn't believe in what we're doing here in Medfield, if we didn't believe in the teachers, if we didn't believe in the job that they're doing and the job that they're capable of doing. And we totally understand that 25 is a large class size to have in first grade. So we have heard what you have said. There's no one here that would tell you that we're comfortable with that, 25 kids in a classroom. We wouldn't be here, we wouldn't have dedicated the number of hours well before anyone got on this school board with the number of hours that we've spent volunteering since our kids were three years old in the integrated program, if we thought that was a good idea. So I can tell you that we will do our absolute best to deal with the issue. I think that we also want people to be understanding of looking at the school budget. And once you hear the school budget and some of the needs that the entire district have, has, I think that you'll have maybe even a better understanding of what's happening throughout the district and how you have to allocate money, so. But I think all of us definitely hear your concerns. We've been there. We've been parents of first-grade kids, and I don't think any of us would have been happy if our child was one of 25 students in first grade. So I don't want you to think that any of us have ever thought that that was an okay idea. So-
Madam Chair, I can just add, too, I appreciate everyone coming tonight, and we will need your support going forward in FY19.
Yes.
Budget will absolutely need your support. What I go over this evening is a draft budget, initial budget. It's only nine slides. It's not the comprehensive one you'll see at the end of January, which goes through everything. But I just want to reiterate, the administration, none of us want 25 kids in a first-grade classroom. I student-taught in first grade, been there, done that. I know exactly what that's like, and I did in the city. So I know exactly what we're talking about with 25 kids in a classroom. It's not ideal. It's not great. None of us want that. And you'll see in the presentation this evening, we have some ways we're going to try to mitigate that in the future. So once we get to that, hopefully you'll get a better understanding, and I can answer any questions that you have on that presentation as well.
Does anyone else want to speak, or Melissa? Go ahead.
Okay, so just follow up on Melissa Roeder, by the way. I have a third grader, a first grader, and a pre-K kid. So you said there's no kindergarten class with 25 kids. But if you take those, if you were ever to take full-day kindergarten, I mean, the half-day kindergarten program away, you-
You can't, you can't take half-day kindergarten.
No, I'm saying if ever in the future that happens, where the town decides, "Okay, we're going to have full-day kindergarten, we're going to make it non-tuition-based, everyone's going to go, we're just going to go that route." You're going to have 25 kids in a classroom because there's that many kids. So that's another issue to address. I'm glad it's not happening anytime soon because I do believe in the half-day program. I've been through it twice. I'm going through it again next year. I really believe in it. But then, if it ever goes away, then you have to look at, well, MAP doesn't have the resources now to get all those kids who need after-school care and things like that. So like, that's, all comes into play as well.
It's a lot of plates.
Yes, a lot, a lot of plates.
We haven't, I don't, at least as long as I've, we've never considered getting rid of the half-day programs. In fact, I'd rather they be all half-day, just because of the, I think that would alleviate a lot of the problems we have in terms of space.
Right.
I know that's not a popular opinion, I understand.
No, it's not a popular opinion.
Parents, but, but as far as, you know, I did teach elementary school, and, you know, that doesn't mean I know everything, because it was a long, long time. I had hair.
Excuse me.
But I, you're right, if we did go to a full-day, we'd have to do, that would take a wholesale restructuring of the district because it would take a lot more classroom space, it would take a lot more money in the budget. That would, I mean, there'd be a massive operational override to do that. We're not in a position to even consider that now.
Well, I'm, for one, I'm glad you're keeping the half-day. I find it works, and I know I'm one of the minority that does it, but-
No, I agree. At the time, I loved the half-day.
Yeah.
I sent all my kids, and then they went to MAP. I'm not sure I would have, especially my youngest, I'm not sure I would have sent her to full-day. But I understand that it's, we certainly don't want to go backwards with taking away full-day option for families, because it works for a number of families and a number of kids. And I also think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's the law in Massachusetts, if you only offer full-day kindergarten, it cannot be tuition-based.
Correctly, yes.
The district has to pay for that. So again, you talk about a budget buster is absorbing that, absorbing, you know, numerous other teachers in limited facilities. I think that, at least right now, that's not, that's not even on the radar, so. Does anyone else have anything? We don't want to, we want to make sure everyone is heard.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Renee Carlson. Nice to be here with all of you. Thank you, Jen, Melissa, for speaking. I'm very nervous.
You may have to go.
They're terrible. I'm here now.
Behind the pretend microphone?
It's a real microphone. It picks up for the TV.
Oh, it picks up?
Yeah, on Medfield TV. And so that becomes the public record.
Okay, got it.
So again, I'm Renee Carlson. I'm here tonight, like many of the others sitting here, maybe for the first time, like myself, because we're concerned about class size. I have a four-year-old who's currently in the Memorial School Integrated Program, and like, about half of his class, he's on an IEP that awarded him, not really awarded, that's the wrong word, that spot. His class right now has about 13 children, and four teach, one teacher, three aides. So that's a wonderful ratio. I, as a parent of a special-needs child, feel that his needs can be met because of that. That changes dramatically when you go from that ratio, and then, I'm not sure what the ratios are in kindergarten, it seems like we're talking a lot about first grade, but to go from that kind of ratio to a 1 to 22, it's just, it's hard as a parent to swallow, to think about a child who has higher needs, as well as typical developing children as well. But how are his needs going to get met? How are the needs in his IEP that are, that's a legal document, how are those things going to get met without a smaller class? I'm also an educator myself, and I have worked in early childhood for a long time, and I can say that the numbers make me very uncomfortable. It's a hard job. It's a hard job when you have help, but to be a first-grade teacher with 22, 25 kids, that's just, that's an impossible job. And so I just wanted to speak to that. Yeah, I don't want him to go backwards. You know, before, we found this wonderful program at Memorial that has just been everything, and he's made all of this great progress. We don't want to go backwards. We don't want to go to a place where we were before this, because it was not a good time. It was a very dark time for our family, and we don't want to go back there. So, sorry. Just wanted to say that it's so important to support our teachers and support our schools. I know that's why you're all here, and I'm here tonight, because I want our schools to stay great. That's why I moved to this town, that's why so many of my friends moved to this town, was for the schools. And we want to keep them great. So whatever we can do-
Thank you. Stop telling them.
Stop telling them. Yeah, oh, no. Now we're, now, no, now we're telling no one, because we see where that's gotten us.
Just tell them how great Westwood is.
Sort of. There's a nice place down the street that's on Gettysburg Elementary School.
We just want to keep our schools great. And I know you guys do, too, and I hope that we can work together to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Thanks. [applause]
Hi, Tanya Perkins. I'm also a parent of a first grader, and I'm just here to just briefly address my shock this year to have a class size of 25, as I think many of us were. I'm just here briefly to speak for our teachers. Thank you very much, Mr. Potts, for those kind words, and also for the students of special needs and all our students, but particularly for the ones who have special needs, who may have an IEP or a 504 that does require the teacher to provide additional accommodations for that student to access the class and the materials and the learning. And that's not always happening when there's 25 students in a classroom. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Does anyone else have anything before we move on? I just want to thank you for speaking. I'm sure it's, it's very difficult. Yeah, well, just anybody. I think that sometimes, too, when you're not used to speaking in front of people and to talk about our children is obviously very difficult, and especially when you feel that the situation isn't ideal. So, you know, obviously, all of us here are parents. I think that it can be very difficult, and of course, none of us want to see anything go backwards. So I just wanted to say thank you, because I know that that is not always an easy thing to do. So on the agenda, we have, the first item is the December 4th, 2017 minutes.
I reviewed the regular meeting and executive session meeting, executive session minutes from December 4th. I recommend they be approved or submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
So anything else to vote on? I was just going to, can I, can I recommend that we move the budget to this point in the meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Since that's what most people seem to be here for, why don't we advance that on the agenda?
Sure.
You're welcome to stay for the other boring stuff. Some of it's actually exciting.
Some of it's not boring.
The boring stuff is where everything gets done.
It's riveting.
Good. But you got to be kind of a geek, feel like it.
All right. Open my voice holes up there. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee and members of the audience. As you know, our initial budget presentation always takes place right before the holiday break, and we worked really hard that all of October, November to develop this budget. And we do a, a public hearing at the end of January every year, and then that budget gets submitted to the town, and I'll go with the entire process. But I think it's always important, you know, that we recognize why we're here and what we're doing. So the budget presentations, especially the one you'll see in January, always has lots of pictures of our kids, just like our screens behind the school committee. That's just all in the last two weeks, all the good stuff happening in our schools the last couple of weeks. So here you see just some great things about our kids. Let's talk about the process to date. So the leadership team established priorities for the schools and the districts. That really came out of our strategic plan that we completed last year. Principals and content specialists developed budgets. Our content specialist is what you typically call department heads everywhere else in the world, but Medfield calls them content specialists. Superintendent and Director of Finance met with the principals and content specialists to review requests. If we weren't at our last meeting, we ended up having 23 meetings. That was with all the content specialists, department heads, principals, assistant principals, and so on. So we went through, they developed their budget, they meet with teachers, they bring the budget to us, and then we sit down for probably an hour each meeting and go through and, you know, decide, you know, what goes in and what doesn't, and we build a budget that way. Board of Selectmen and Warren Committee held a meeting for all department heads to communicate the FY19 expectations. I always call this affectionately the doom and gloom meeting.[1696.91] If we weren't at our last meeting, we ended up having 23 meetings. That was with all the content specialists, department heads, principals, assistant principals and so on. So we went through, they developed their budget, they meet with teachers, they bring the budget to us and then we sit down for probably an hour each meeting and go through and, you know, decide, you know, what goes in and what doesn't and we build a budget that way. Board of Selectmen and Warren Committee held a meeting for all department heads to communicate the FY19 expectations. I always call this affectionately the doom and gloom meeting. My friends that were back there in the Warren Committee and the Board of Selectmen always tell us there's no money, it's gonna be the worst year ever, blah, blah, but we hear it every year, same thing.
They very often write about that.
In every, in every town I've worked in, every town I've worked in, I've heard that. So that's, you know, it's kind of the playbook every year. Superintendent Leadership Team met to review the budget requests and priorities. So after we have that, all those 23 meetings, then we sit back and we, we go through the budgets. Michael Lafrancesca, our Director of Finance, myself and the leadership team get together and go through all of these numbers. Superintendent Director of Finance developed the initial budget and I can't emphasize this enough, this last bullet point, that this, initial budget equals first pass draft. I can't emphasize that enough. Last year at our public hearing, someone asked me a question about something that we, we talked about on this. It is really a first draft, first pass on this budget. The real nuts and bolts happen by the end of, of January. So just, I can't emphasize it enough. The number that you see here, once we go through the budget, the increase is a large number and it will never be that by the time we get in January. It's just at this point in time when we develop it, that's the number that we have. So our.
It's also, if I could say, it's also not just, but it's also not just a wish list.
No, oh, no, not at all. No, it's not a wish list at all. In fact, in the January meeting, there'll be a slide that shows all the requests that principals and department heads made that didn't make the budget. I mean, that's all part of that too. So our, our strategic plan really drives what we're doing and I want to just go over what some of the budget implications are. There's lots going on in our strategic plan, but these definitely have the budget implications. So our goal number one, committed to the collaborative learning culture of continuous improvement for all staff and students. So we want to maintain and enhance current staffing as much as we can, continue the commitment we have to professional development. This year in our budget FY18, we're on schedule to spend $302,000 in professional development for our teachers. That does not include the money that MCP and PTO supplement each year as well. Strengthen, expand STEAM. So STEAM is science, technology, the arts, math, real important stuff for us, engineering. We're trying to expand what we do at the elementary schools, but also coursework at the high school as well. Maintain, expand and improve technology and infrastructure. So as we've seen in the last four years, we've gone completely one-to-one, grade six through 12 and we've added a lot of technology in our elementary schools. So that takes infrastructure and, and money and we've done that. We've added a lot of Chromebooks in the last two years so that we'll be doing our MCAS assessments, state mandated testing on Chromebooks this year, the entire district. So we're a year ahead of schedule on that. So we, we really did a great investment with technology and those of you that have children in the younger grades, you'll see it, five years ago, there was nothing. I mean, there was no Wi-Fi in the elementary schools, none of that stuff. So we've really done a lot of work in the last few years to, to get that where it needs to be. Goal number two, we're committed to supporting and developing the health and social, emotional wellbeing of our students and staff. So we want to maintain current staffing and that's really important for us and certainly that's the wellbeing of our students and staff. Once we get further in this presentation, we may not be able to do that this year. And then our wellness program that we do, great, great wellness department and Susan Kahl, who was scheduled to be here tonight, heads that and she does a wonderful job along with our teachers. And our RISE program is our transition program that we added two years ago at the high school. So whenever kids are coming back from a hospitalization, instead of going right back to class, they spend sometimes a few days, sometimes a few weeks in the RISE program. It's been very, very successful for our students and our parents. And we want to promote the collaboration with outside agencies. So we've done some work this year with Interface, which is our mental health referral. And then we also do work with, we collaborate with Medfield, Cares About Prevention and MCAP and they'll be, that'll be tied into one of the new positions we asked for coming up later. And then we, we recently started a Suicide Prevention Coalition. So again, still working with outside agencies and Riverside to do that, that kind of good work. Goal number three, committed to developing the whole child and recognizing contributions and needs of all students. So again, our special education staffing, you'll see additions in that. ELL staffing, we made some additions in that last year. Maintaining and enhancing current opportunities for students outside of the classroom. A group of teachers and I have worked the last two years looking at the stipends. So if teachers do things outside of the classroom, whether they're coaching or if they're doing band or running a club, whatever they're doing, they're paid an additional stipend for that. So we've been working the last couple of years trying to revise that stipend because some of our teachers are woefully undercompensated in that area when they do it. We're pretty competitive in some areas, but there are some areas that we're just not competitive at all. So we've been working with the union leadership and other teachers to, to try to get that and that'll be all part of our negotiation process as we go forward. So goal number four, committed to contributing to a vibrant community by fostering collaborative, communicative and consistent education for all students. And again, this is really looking at the appropriate resources and allocations during the budget process. We did a lot of work the last few years on making sure that took place. One of the things that we found when we started doing this four or five years ago is that one particular elementary school was getting allocated more than the other two and there was really no rhyme or reason for it. So now we equal that out so that all three elementary schools, for the most part, have the same allocation in their budgets. Middle schools and high schools, just by their nature, cost a lot more to run. So their, their allocations are always a lot more than the middle and high schools. And then lastly, committed to the investments in the facilities and equipment to optimize student learning. We have a Director of Facilities position that we started last year that we shared with the town. That's, you know, it's be careful what you wish for. Jerry has done an incredible job with, with both the facilities, the town and the schools and one of the things he did was put together a 20-year capital plan of which he submitted that to the Board of Selectmen. He'll be doing a presentation here and probably next month, but there's $42 million worth of repairs in that plan. So you ask and you shall receive. That's the kind of things that we need in terms of infrastructure townwide, not just in the schools. Resource allocation for buildings, again, that goes back to the last one. Our technology infrastructure is really important. We keep adding to that to make sure that things work well. And then feasibility study, this is an important one for all, everyone in the room. It's not part of our operating budget, but we are gonna, we are going to town meeting in April, asking for an amount of money for a feasibility study. That could be up to $1 million. So that's for the New Dale Street School and that's part of that process, which we'll certainly hear more about that in the coming months. But that, that ties directly into our FY19 budget implication, but it's also a big part of our goal number five in our strategic plan. So we had some assumptions that we developed this budget. In the 12 years I've been doing this, that first bullet was always going to be level funded or increased. Just to give you a sense of where we are now in FY18, we lost just about $50,000 worth of federal funding. So, you know, we, we finished our budget in April and then our fiscal year starts on July 1 and we're $50,000 short already at the start for federal entitlement grants and those are usually special education tied, tied to special education, professional development, those kinds of things. We don't know where that's gonna go. My sense is it's probably gonna be reduced based on what we had this year. Chapter 70 is the mechanism the state uses to fund education. In a community like Medfield, we don't get a lot of our budget in Chapter 70. About $6 million out of the $34 million comes out of Chapter 70. That's based on the equalized valuation or the, the wealth of the community. So they take the W2s and the residential wealth and that's how the formula works. So you're not gonna get a lot of money from the state when you live in Medfield, unfortunately. So most of this budget you'll see comes from your property tax. Enrollment will increase again, we're planning, that's our assumption. You know, we have the, the projections and we assume, we assume that's gonna happen again. Continuation of tuition-based programs, that's our preschool and our kindergarten. One of the things that we had to do is restructure preschool for next year and not have as many options because we needed space for another first grade classroom. And Circuit Breaker will be funded at 60%. Circuit Breaker is the state reimbursement money we get based on special education. So once we spend a certain number over the threshold in special education, we get reimbursement. The, the rate has typically been the last couple of years, 70%, 72% is the top. Last year, we budgeted 65 originally. We changed it to 70 near the end because we had to make cuts before town meeting. The government said there was gonna be fully funded, which is 72%, so we thought we were being a little conservative and in July, we get a memo saying it's being funded at 65%. We lost $80,000 there. So in July, by August 1st of this year, we'd already lost $120,000 in our budget. So some of the drivers in FY19, typical drivers you see in any school budget, every school budget is 85%, 80 to 85% salaries, no matter where you go, Medfield, Dover, you name it, it's all the same. So our collective bargaining agreements and contracts, our personnel costs. So we have collective bargaining agreements with teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, secretaries, those are four CBAs, plus individual contracts with administrators and others and, and then appointments with other folks that don't fall into those categories. Transportation, this is year two of a three year and if you remember last year when we, we talked about our transportation issues, we actually did not vote, the school committee did not vote originally to award that contract because we felt that, and there was an article in the paper yesterday that I retweeted, if you follow me on Twitter, that talks about the, the issue around lack of competition with school bus contracts. It's an issue. It's a huge issue. And when the school committee did not vote to accept it the first time around, we met with this, with the company and we deferred some of the costs. So the, the increase over the three years is the same, but we deferred costs last year to this year. So we have a fairly over $100,000 increase in transportation this year and this is year two of our contract. Special education, always a driver in terms of in district positions we're adding, out of district students, transportation and any programs that we developed in-house to bring students back. Professional development, again, we're continuing that commitment that we have, like I said, 302,000 this year. Technology, continue the current initiatives, infrastructure, hardware replacement and software and then health insurance costs. So health insurance costs do not appear on our side of the budget, they appear on the town side of the budget, but I think it's always important to include that as a budget driver because it impacts what the town can give us. Regional school districts like Dover Sherburne, it appears on their side of the budget as a regional, but as a town, any town district, it's on the town side. But I think there's, they're predicting, I don't know, 6% or 7% increase. They always budget for 10 and it comes in about 6% or 7%.
Jeff, before you go on, can I just ask you to, so when we budget for a new teacher, I think we budget masters, is it master seven?
We do this year, Michael. Masters, masters 35, step seven. No, masters 30, step five. Masters 30, step five.
Masters 30, step five? So what's, so can you, can you just explain what that is?
So the teachers.
And what that, what that means that we assume for every new hire?
Right, so the, the teacher's salary schedule, it goes vertically, the number of years of service and then horizontally based on what your degrees are. So when we say masters 30, we say masters plus 30 credits, step five. So a fifth-year teacher, so you're going down and across masters 30. I don't even, what is that, do you know what that is this year? You gonna pull it up? Okay.
And the reason we do that is because we don't, in, in Medfield, we, we typically hire, because we have a, a pretty good contract and a great district, we don't hire first year teachers. We, we tend to hire.
Rarely.
More experienced teachers who've got, you have to have a master's degree within five years anyway, so I don't know why we bother with the, the bachelor's scale very much.
Still a couple left.
Yeah, it's not very many.
Grandfather.
But so that's, that's how we budget is that we assume every hire, on average, has got at least that, that much experience when we hire them.
Right. Okay, so our FY18 approved budget, $33,707,035. Our initial budget, again, it's the initial budget, 35,265,695, increase of 6.75%, which is exactly the same place we were at this time last year. Tom? Sure, you want the, you want both of them or? Okay.
For those of you who don't know, Tom, Tom Riis is on the Warren Committee and so that's why we all thought it was funny he has to repeat it because he may have choked on it.
Turn around and take a good look.
Michael, did you find that number?
But that's why I reminded you that it was exactly where we were at this point last year and we didn't end up there, so. So what does that do? So let's take a look at what it does. Maintains most of our current teachers and programs and staff, and I used that word most because you'll see down lowers that we don't maintain all. Includes steps and lanes, longevity and increase to Unit A. So steps and lanes is what I talked about. Steps is going to up and down vertically, lanes are going across, so it includes that. Longevity, teachers that work a certain amount of years get a longevity bonus payment, so that's included in there. Excuse me, and then an increase in Unit A, so there's an increase built in there as well.
Can we just?
I'm not gonna tell you what the increase is because we're still negotiating.
Can we pause there again and just, so we pay longevity to more experienced teachers as a way to try to retain them. When teachers reach the high end, we found this when we negotiated our last contract, teachers reach the high end of the contract, they were before our last contract not being competitively paid. We adjusted for that significantly in last contract. But just, Jeff, just steps and lanes longevity before we build any increase, what's, what's the impact of that to the budget? If we assume and we're not recommending this.
So steps and lanes are about half a million.
Okay. So of the two, less than $2 million you're recommending, just before we do anything, that's a half million.
That's just steps.
A quarter of that is just if we stay where.
So if you're a teacher that's been here a long time, you don't count in the steps because you're on the top step.
Right.
So that's why you typically have longevity for those folks because they're not going up and down on the vertical, on the salary schedule. So that's where longevity is built in for them. Like for instance, last year, I mean, last year, last contract when we negotiated, we had a cost of living increase and then we had an additional cost, an additional bump for those folks at the top step because they don't get the step. So steps are typically between 2.5 to 4 to 5%. So each step, so if you're in the top step teacher, you're not getting that 4% that other teachers are getting because you've already reached that top step.
So when we, when we talk about, a few weeks or months from now, when we vote a budget, if we just.
Excuse me.
Just, I'm not negotiating in the table here, but just say we had a 1% increase for the first year, for, no, no, no single teacher is getting a 1% increase except maybe some of those at the very top, top steps because they don't get the steps. That's why they get the longevity. But the average teacher actually gets.
It was 6% last year.
6% because of the, the steps.
I should say this, this, this year FY18.
Michael found the number, I think, for, we, we budget $62,000.
$62,000.
For every new teacher we bring in, it's $60,000.
So level funds of professional development. So R and D is something that we really feel strongly about. We have teachers that work over the summer to do research and development on a project. So the project has to be tied back to our strategic plan and we, we, the teachers pick on, pick something, it could be developing a course, it could be improving the assessments they're doing and they work on that over the summer and we, we pay them for that. We allocate typically $60,000 a year for that. And we've been, you know, in the beginning of the year, we have teachers come present what they did over the summer, really good stuff. Conference and travel and course reimbursement. So conference and travel is when obviously teachers go to conferences outside of the district and then course reimbursement. So if you're a teacher and you take courses, you get X amount reimbursed. So we usually allocate, I think contractually, $42,500 in this contract a year. So just R and D and course reimbursement for PDs, 100, 102,000. So we level fund that and keep that in there as well. Add a teacher in grades one, two and three and this is the other thing that we're doing. We're adding an additional teacher on top of that. So we have one, two and three and then we're gonna have an additional position to deploy in case we have a situation like this year where you have one particular grade that just has a lot of move-ins, even though we don't have that in the projections. If we have a group that, let's say, second grade has, you know, 21 kids move in, then we'll deploy that teacher to second grade. And if it's first grade, we deploy the first grade or third, whatever, if it's kindergarten or if it's fourth grade. But the goal is to add those one and each, to get that 21 or 22 in a classroom and then have that extra teacher in case we need to deploy that teacher.
I'm sorry, I'm stupid. What line is the extra teacher in? It says like, is it to add a special ed teacher until that teacher?
No, no, it's just, we have, we're adding one, two and three and additional teacher.
Oh, so she's not on?
It says not on there yet. Yeah, yeah. Adds a special education teacher and a .5 reading teacher. So again, reading is something that's really important to us and we didn't have a lot of reading support in the district for a while, so we've been adding that almost every year, reading teachers. So we, we're gonna do that. An additional special education teacher, that's a .5 at Memorial and a .5 at WeLock, so it, it, it builds that up as well. So here's, we get the most of current staff. So this, this budget that we do eliminates three middle school positions. So we eliminated one section of grade five in FY18, one of four, it's that small group that's coming up. So we have that small group that started, you know, many years ago that keeps coming up and because we have a cluster model in middle school, it, it financially does not make sense for us to have three clusters in sixth grade next year. We would look at having clusters of 13 or 14 kids. That's wonderful in a private school setting. I guess, you know, we'd all love that, but my friends in the back table wouldn't like that too much financially. So it's just not efficient to have that, that particular group in there. So that's what this budget does. Doesn't mean it's gonna stay that way. That's, that's what this budget does. .5 math reduction at the high school and that's just based on enrollment of courses, that's a projection that we're making right now. Increase of the general education, special education, transportation, I mentioned that earlier.[1746.54] Includes special education support staff, so from May of last year till today, we have added nine additional teaching assistant positions in district. Many of those have been from students that have moved in that need additional support. So, again, we started off the year, one-twenty in the whole with our grants, and, and then we had to add those positions that were not in the budget that was approved in April. So we, that, this budget here carries over those nine people we've added in this budget, so they weren't in last year's. That's an increase of almost three hundred thousand dollars in that line item, excuse me. So that's significant. Supports policy manual revision with MASC. So one of the things that Jess and Anne, Anne and May, and Mary and I have talked about is many school districts will have MASC, which is the Mass Association of School Committees. They will have them redo their entire, entire policy manual, which Medfield did, I think, in ninety-eight or ninety-nine or two thousand, give or take. And then they digitize it so that it becomes a live document that if you wanna see what the, what the class size is, you click on it, it's there, there's no issue. And then they maintain and house it for you. So when there's a policy change here, we send it to them, they maintain it, it's easy for you guys to take a look at it. Excuse me. And I, we talked to them that day, we were at MASC at the conference, and that's a project that we'd like to work on next year, to get all that digitized and up to date. And then the last one is something I mentioned earlier about working with other outside groups. So we're looking at doing a prevention specialist in town. So the data that you would've seen if everything happened tonight with Susan and then me following her, show that we have, we definitely had a concern over the years of alcohol use in the community, no doubt about it. And we'd like to look at a prevention specialist that can work with kids. And that would be outside of school, inside of school, but to work with kids and families. And that position would be a three-way split between Medfield Youth Outreach, the Police Department, and us. It goes, it's gonna be on the town's side, so we have to go through the Personnel Board, so I'm not sure how far that's gonna go. But we felt it was important that we at least talk about having a prevention specialist on staff to work with kids and work with families. It really supports what we're trying to do with our kids, but it would be a town-side employee. So, only a portion of that, and we haven't even talked about the proportion of the budget. That would be a part of that, so. That's what it does.
Sorry, can I ask a question about the middle school teachers? So you eliminate the positions, but then the grades coming up are larger, so that position is just gone for a year, and then you expect it to-
Three years.
Couple of years, yeah.
It's three years. And, and you know what, it's not, what we're looking at right now, and what we're trying to do is work with the teachers to see if, if we have someone that is licensed to be an elementary school, elementary school teacher, because some of our teachers have many licenses, so they can teach elementary, middle school, special ed, general ed, is to have someone at the middle school work at the elementary school. So they have experience elementary, they taught there, they might've moved up to the middle school a few years ago and moved them there. So we're not looking at wholesale, you know, getting rid of teachers, but that does save a salary budget-wise. This may not be a person, but it's a salary.
The position will be taken out for the present fifth graders going to sixth grade?
Correct.
And the fourth graders now, who will be in sixth grade and the years?
Correct.
And then- And the third graders?
Maybe not them by then. Nicole, maybe not, maybe not by then, maybe not by then, but at least for this year. We're, we're years away from that, we're years away.
Yeah, what we've done, just to go back, we've, as Jeff put in parentheses there, but he didn't focus on it. There is a small cohort that's come through, and so we have eliminated every year, you know, one teacher in that grade. And now, part of the reason you're all here is that we have to hit the reset and start adding that back in. So in FY twenty, there's, there's no question we'll be adding a fourth grade teacher and maybe a fifth grade teacher. Then those are the positions we eliminated in FY seventeen and eighteen. And so they'll, they'll get put back in, it's a little bit of horse trading.
Yeah.
And it's not just our friends in the back who, you know, at least now think we wouldn't wanna have class sizes of thirteen at the middle school. I mean, I, I would, couldn't support it when we're asking for this, this budget.
No, but the fourth graders now can't afford-
No, again, we're, we're years away, Nicole, we're years away from that. This is just for next year.
Just in essence, I have a question.
Sure.
So we're, we're adding one, two, and three, but we're losing three above, so aren't we just washing?
Exactly, you wash the, that's how you do it with the budget, sure.
We really understand that, but then in essence, we're really not adding anything, because we're just gonna add these back in later.
Right, but that's for budget reasons, sure.
Right, but that's, we all understand, for budget reasons, we're moving numbers around.
Yeah, that's why it's only a six point seven percent increase.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're adding three teachers, that'd be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, right?
Right.
We're actually adding teachers, but we're not, in essence, we're washing it, because we're taking care of that smaller cohort above, removing those people down.
Well, we're proposing to add teachers in other areas, though, I mean, you know, the special ed teacher, yeah. Kinda trading those three, kinda trading those three, yeah.
Exactly.
So the special ed teacher is for Wheelock and Memorial?
So it'd be, no, no, it'd be a part-time person, so make the person that's part-time whole at Memorial, and then add another part-time person at, at Wheelock. That could be Dale, we're, we're still discussing that, because the middle school wants another point-five, Dale wants another point-five, and Wheelock wants another point-five, so we're, we're still in the discussion phase on that.
And is there an easy place on the website to find how many special ed teachers there are? Including, like, SLPs, PTs, OTs as well as special ed teachers?
I think we have that anywhere on there. You know, actually, if you look at the program review we did a couple of years ago, it has all the breakdown of the caseloads on that. It's on the website, yeah.
Can we keep any middle-sized, can we keep any-
I feel your pain, Bonnie, I have the same problem.
I have a pop rocks if you want some.
I just, I just pop one in, thank you.
Are we gonna be able to keep any of the middle school teachers that we're cutting because they have certifications that would allow to keep them?
That's, that's the goal, yeah, that's definitely the goal.
Do we have that?
We do have it, yes. Yep, we have it, that's, the goal is to do that.
So that just means that the three middle schools could maybe go into the one, two, or three?
They could, yeah, that's, that's the goal, that's what we're trying, so if we have people that are duly certified, that have taught elementary before, we can just, we can move them in.
And then maybe if they go up, let it go work, it's very-
They could, yeah, yeah.
If they wanted to.
If they want to.
Well, I mean, we assign them, but yeah.
They may, they may not want to. Any questions in the committee?
The prevention specialist, that's just for substance, or is that for suicide prevention as well?
Just for substance.
I do wish that, just to say, I wish that Susan could've been here tonight to do the wellness presentation, because I think it would have been such a, being that I'm sitting kinda on the shoulder right now between the upper grades in high school and the lower grades, seeing what our kids in high school are faced with and their challenges right now, and being where you are right now, sometimes it is such a shock to see.
It's eye-opening, I mean, it is.
And kids in Medfield, because we do everything well, have a higher level of drinking than many other communities. And I, I think that having a prevention specialist is at baseline, something that's really, feels very important to me.
Just to be clear, this will be Medfield data, right, that she's gonna-
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's on the website.
You've seen the whole big kit and boo, which is difficult to process, you know, you spent a lot of time looking at it, this is Susan.
Mm-hmm, on our website.
When it first came out, it wasn't.
No, so it's either go on our website, and it will say Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, scroll down, it's all right there. It's a hundred and sixty pages from each school or so.
That's the one that has the issue of stress level, too.
Everything, yeah, it's got everything. So that, so our kids take that every two years, and it's substance abuse, it's stress, it's sexual behavior, it's everything. Texting, you name it, it's all on there.
So is this specialist gonna be, like, one person who's only like a counselor? Or is it gonna be like a dare program kind of?
Oh, no, no, it's one person that's gonna work with families and kids and, yeah, it's not gonna be a dare, nothing like that.
So like, if, if my kid was in high school and he had a problem with drugs, I would go to this person?
That could be one way of doing it, or working with younger, younger families to prevent it, too, I mean, that's, that's part of it. It's not gonna be like a dare kind of thing.
Before middle school is more important.
Say you're younger, like, a polyon, like, fourth grade, like, I don't understand that.
Yeah, yeah, probably fourth, fifth grade and middle school.
It'd be, it'd be integrated into the health curriculum and the-
Oh, okay, I'm just thinking, like, when I go, like, how, if your kid's in fourth grade, it's like they don't have a problem with drugs and alcohol, so I don't-
Well, we hope.
I just think, oh, it's-
We hope, I mean.
But we do start teaching them about drugs and alcohol at that very early age.
And our health curriculum does all of that, it would just be another part of it.
Abnormal thing to talk about.
Can you explain the floating teacher a little more?
Sure.
Is that the same salary as the other teachers, and what's the floating teacher's on day one?
Well, if the floating teacher is needed, the floating teacher'd be working on day one. So it's, it's really like an insurance policy, in case we get a lot of kids in one particular grade level, we need to add one in there, we'll add it in there. If we don't need that person, then we don't. It's not, it's not someone on staff, it's not someone on staff.
So, no, so I was saying, placeholder teacher, that's a placeholder.
It's someone that we'd hire over the summer if we needed that person. Or as Jen's gonna say, just put him in second grade, too.
What I was gonna say is, what happens if it all, for all three grades, or does the teacher move?
Who likes your tie?
I love your tie, yeah, but I'm number two in the best order.
I think we should probably, at some point, I think we should move on, because we could come up with hypotheticals, too, I think, all night long. I, I mean, I think as a committee, we do it often sometimes.
And there's much more detail in January, much more detail, so, you know, these ten slides are forty in January. And that's your opportunity, again, it's in the auditorium, and come to every meeting you want and ask questions, it's fine, but that is really dedicated, that whole meeting is dedicated to this entire budget. Yep.
Just one question, going back to the class sizes for first grade. So we have this additional teacher coming in, which hopefully will help issue if no other students come to town, and then it begins to get tighter. For the years coming, if we assume that that trend is gonna go up and the class sizes are gonna grow, it then becomes an accommodation issue, am I right? The school, the space in the school.
It does, yeah.
If you add a teacher, you don't have classrooms.
Right.
And my question is, do we need to be thinking about the budget implications of that now and how we address it so that we don't get to the point where we can't do anything about it because we haven't? I mean, I hear-
Yeah, I, I said at a, at a meeting before, if anyone has in their mind that we're gonna start adding modular classrooms in Memorial, it's just not gonna happen. I mean, we're not, we're not gonna put modulators on, when we're, we're asking our community for a million dollars in April for a feasibility study for a fifty million dollar school. We can't be throwing on two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar modulators to get us a small group, we just can't, you just can't do that. So I think what we'd have to do is, is we look at taking some things away. We'd have to take space away to provide classroom space, if what your scenario, if that comes through, then we'd have to do that. So that means, you know, that means moving programs, that means, you know, maybe not, maybe kids aren't going to the program, programs are going to the kids, those kinds of things, we have to make those structural adjustments. Those kinds of things, sure.
But your hope is that Dale Street is going to address a lot of this.
It, it will, it will free up-
Three years out.
It sure will. Hey, Jerry?
Jeff, when do you think, I know it's a lot of moving pieces for the January meeting, when will the public be able to review it before that meeting, to sort of, I mean, I know it's a very comprehensive meeting.
Yeah.
Is there data a few days ahead of time that will be available that we can review, or?
So we're gonna put the entire line-by-line budget online. Yeah, we're gonna put the whole thing there, so it may not be the presentation, but you'll be able to see all the numbers.
And you think a couple of days before?
I would think so. Yeah, you think we do that a couple of days, Michael? I know you're loading it right now, and still working on it, so. Yep, sure. Anything else?
Jeff, what are the things in the budget that you're proposing were not something we did in schools fifteen years ago?
What, what is?
What's in there that we didn't do fifteen years ago? Like, at all, wasn't something that was part of schools?
I mean, what we currently have, you didn't have all the guidance support that you have now, you didn't have the wellness, the number of wellness teachers we have now, you didn't have that. I'd like to look to see what the class sizes were, frankly, fifteen years ago. I'd love to see that, because I know that we weren't, we weren't a place that had nineteen, eighteen, or twenty kids in these classes, so I need to, I'd have to research that a little bit and see if I can get some of that information. I think most of the social, emotional supports that you just, you just never had, you had maybe one guidance counselor that worked, you had none of this technology that we have now. You know, all those things that we've invested in the last four or five years. I, I think I told you guys before that the last override in this community was a technology override, and I think it was seven years ago now. And it was really focused on purchasing technology for this building and some in the middle school. In the last three years, we've replaced almost all of that through the budget itself, not even through an override, so. We, we've done pretty well, you know, it's just, it's not perfect, but we've done pretty well with a lot of this stuff, without an override.
I would also say that the district has, although we may, fifteen years ago have had special education support staff, the district has, within the last few years, really made an emphasis on increasing the amount of special ed.
No question.
Support staff, increasing the amount of special ed.
No question.
Teachers, that it's-
So we, we made a concerted effort last year to structurally start to change special ed. We wanted to change special ed structurally last year.
Right.
So we added those positions of team chair, and, and we wanted to do that because we knew, functionally, it had to work better than what it was working, and part of that was the structure, not having the staff we needed.
Being able to do direct staff, direct service instead of administrative.
Right.
So when you add a special ed teacher and support, or a special ed teacher, you're almost getting twice your bang for your buck than you would've three years ago, because many of the administrative duties will have been taken off of that-
Off their plate, absolutely.
Just a comment about class size, you can invite all the personal small snatch jobs, teacher from two thousand one to two thousand six that Wheelock. It ranged from eighteen per class, which is the smallest that I, I personally had, and I know the class sizes just at the Wheelock school, all the way to twenty-three, twenty-three was the largest class size that we had during that time period. We also had twelve sections, twelve teachers. So when you had an influx, you had more places to go, obviously. So I think there's a lot of factors that go into that, but knowing we had more teachers in the past, populations gone up and down.
Right. It's going back up again, no doubt.
And we probably paid teachers less, and didn't have the technology drivers that we have now. And there are so many different things, even in the last fifteen to seventeen years, it's pretty amazing.
Oh, Seth Muncher?
I think we'll-
Okay.
Oh, do you have one more question?
Hey, Leo?
Do you have any consideration on that feasibility study, that is district-wide feasibility study instead of just Dale Street? Because if we were talking about, just a concern, obviously, you know, a district-wide feasibility study over time to plan a budget for buildings and contingency around that for the next twelve to fifteen years, that'll have a sizable impact, to kind of answer those questions. You would that share in about two thousand and one?
Through MSBA?
Yeah, MSBA will supply you on a case-by-case basis, and then you only pay it to the part of Dale Street.
Right, right.
But it might be put in town to plan for that impending, because it will encompass a little bit better statistics than NASDAQ would do. And it would, you know, the big business that we hear, supposedly GE and some others targeting the Boston area, and Metro West becoming that kind of hotspot. I don't kind of see our trend going the other way. So, you know, and I realize how much of an eyesore, you know, poor corporations are after town, but they, they can, they can boot the stock yet, and they can, they can be moved, so.
Yeah, I've had them, done them before.
Exactly, and you can move them as needed, but that, that study will probably come out of the phase, you know, implementation of Dale Street, which may actually require that over time anyway. So just for that foresight, you know, perhaps if we move the town, and the warrant post behind me, to consider a district-wide feasibility study to help land that out over time.
So I'd say, Leo, that MSBA wouldn't, as you said, would not cover anything but Dale Street. So if we're looking at a million dollars just for Dale Street, and we're asking them to look at a three, four, five, a four, five, and then a refurb, because they have to do the refurb feasibility, that's part of the deal. We're talking over two million for that. The good thing is, so Jerry McCarty, our facilities person, just did a twenty-year plan for the buildings, so it gives a good sense about the buildings, but not, not the enrollment. I, to me, what keeps me up at night is Hospital Hill and all that area keeps me up at night. Forty Bs keep me up at night, because their unpredictability. We're already starting to get kids from GE, they started moving up. I mean, I think that, I've been here five years, and they're still talking about the hospital. Everyone keeps telling me that's, those of you that have been around forever tell me it's been like that forever. I get really concerned about that, because that's gonna be a game changer, that's going to be, no matter what they do up there, if there's any type of, type of housing, it's gonna impact us a lot, because if they put-
Still pushing for golf course.
If they put, exactly, if they put senior housing up there, those folks are gonna move up there, and all the families are gonna backfill those, those homes. If they do condos, families are gonna move in. I mean, if you were at the meeting before when I read the NASDAQ stuff, three communities that have a, a high ratio of kids forever, Sudbury, Hoppington, Med- I mean, if you were at the meeting before, when I read the NASDAQ stuff, three communities that have a, a high ratio of kids forever, Sudbury, Hoppington, Medfield. So if it opens up, and we start having, you know, development Hospital Hill, then that's gonna be a real game changer. All the feasibility studies in the world are not gonna help us there, because it's unpredictable at this point. I think we spent almost a million dollars in the town now, but a million dollars on consultants for that, so far.
They are, they are coming to the final plan.
Yeah.
They're, they have a master plan that's gonna be presented, so.
Oh, they're doing great work, I mean, they're working hard.
But it is coming to a conclusion, where the town will be voting sometime in the first half of two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah. That'd be good. At least we'll know where we are at that point, you know.
Jeff, do you wanna take, unless your voice needs to break, do you wanna move on to the Dale Street, out of the order on the agenda as well?
Sure, I'd like to, does that work?
Right, let's move on to Dale Street.
Okay, so as you know, last week, we went in front of the MSBA board, and we were invited into the program, which is pretty exciting. I know that this process started many, many years ago, and there were many SOIs before, statement of interest before, so we're pretty excited to be into that phase. We felt pretty good about our chances after MSBA came out and visited in August. So we'd never gotten to that point as a district where they actually came to see the site. So we had made the final seventy-one at that point, before they, they wanted to see the site. They came out, an architect and the second in charge came out and worked with us, spent about three hours with Michael, Steve Grenham, Tim Bonfati and I, and we gave them the tour. We showed them everything of Dale Street, and they left saying, yeah, you need a new building. So that was, that worked out really well for us. Mary Ann did a great job speaking on our behalf at the meeting, we were right next to Marty Walsh and his entourage, which was interesting. But I think that, you know, it's exciting for the community, I'm happy for the kids, you know, we're looking at, you know, three, three and a half years or so to be completed with that, so all these first grade kids will be in that nice new building, they would've forgotten about the twenty-five kids in their class by then. So they'll be in a new shiny, new shiny building.
The plan to knock down?
We don't know. So that's, so that's all part of the feasibility. So the feasibility, they come in and they spend about eight months, nine months doing the feasibility study, and, you know, they're, they could build it behind WeLok, they could build it between Dale Street and Memorial, they could tell us to get a refurb Dale Street, it's a wonderful place, which I highly doubt. There's all, they, they have a lot of control on that, so we'll learn much more from that process, but that'll give us a sense of what we are. But again, it's exciting, we're gonna be asking for, as I said, and we need your support at town meeting this year, which ironically, when we need you, is not the Monday after April vacation for the first time in a long, long time, which is nice. So it's, it's the Monday after that, the thirtieth of April.
Get a sitter and get a sitter who can stay past ten o'clock.
So that will be, that will be what we have on the agenda for that, but I don't know if you even want to add anything, but.
I, I just wanna say, you know, to some people, and I know I've heard comments like, oh, that was fast. For those of us who've been on the committee and submitting the statement of interest that you have to do every single year, year after year after year after year. It, it hasn't been a, a quick process at all, to get even invited into this program. And so when we talk about feasibility studies, the, I, I just wanna let the community know that the rules surrounding the MSBA giving you, you know, loaning you this kind of money, or the reimbursement money, the rules are extremely strict. I think I didn't even realize until you, you sit through the orientation and you realize, you have to jump through hoop and hoop and hoop to, it's almost like you get points on a test to get reimbursed the money, so. And I completely understand that people have a lot of ideas and creative ways of using the money, but they're not as creative as we would like them to be. So while I appreciate the creativity, this is a very stringent process for us to get much-needed funds back for our community. There's no way, you know, when we were there, Michael, Jeff and I heard how some communities were kind of going rogue, and they weren't gonna, you know, take the money, and they were gonna build a school on their own. That can't happen in Medfield. It's millions and millions and millions of dollars that we get back for the town. So we will jump through the hoops to get this for our kids, and I think the only thing that I have to say is that that's when we need your support. Because there are a lot of, and you'll be amazed, as parents of young families, and even myself, I always think, how could anyone not want a school like that for little children? But you will be amazed at the number of people that will, I think, come out and not think this is a good idea, or not think that this is necessary. So I am, I am, I think I am begging, I am begging at this point, for you to follow this closely, to be at town meeting and to listen to, you know, this as it unfolds. I think it is, it is a marathon, not a sprint for this process, it is not a quick process. So, you know, you just have to kind of stay with us and keep up to date in, in this process, because I think it is a very long, a long process.
So the town will get thirty-nine point eight-four percent back on the entire project, so, for most of the project, so that's a substantial amount of money. You know, one of the things that helped us out is we went into the rapid repair program with MSBA two years ago to get a new boiler system for WeLok. And that, you know, we treated that as kind of a test drive with MSBA to do everything that they wanted us to do and jump through every hoop, you know, just so they could see that we're willing to work with them, so that we knew the SOI was coming up again for that partnership. That went really, really well, we got all that money back to the community, a hundred and eighty-five thousand or something, maybe more. But the relationship that we have with MSBA during that process was really positive, and, I mean, that had to help us, it had to help us in this, because they, they had so many, excuse me, so many other districts, and they already had a track record with us of, of positive stuff happening, so.
If I could just interject, I think that that is also significant when you're looking at someone who can, I didn't open this.
Oh, I'll take this one, Francie, I'm set, thank you.
As you're choking.
I know, I'm choking.
I just wanna get across, I'm sorry. Move him aside, I've got something to say to these people. I just wanna say that that also goes to the fact that they had a superintendent and a business manager, a finance manager, that they trusted that when you give them a process, the WeLok boiler was a perfect example of this. That when you give them a job to do, they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it on time, and they're gonna come in under budget. That kind of credibility is not something that needs to be taken lightly. It doesn't happen in every district, and it happened here, so I just want to make that clear to everybody sitting here, that that kind of process is significant when we're talking about building that credibility with someone who's going to reimburse you millions and millions of dollars. So I just wanna express my public thanks to Michael and Jeff. I think that, that, that project was kind of a test run for, you know, building our credibility for the Dale Street school, which we desperately need, as, as you will soon find out, if you haven't already.
So Jeff, if, other than building a case for the, to borrow the money at town meeting in April, what happens between now and April with respect to the project?
So we are actually gonna meet with the permanent building committee this week, and Tim Bonfati, who's not here tonight, but also a school community member, is on the permanent building committee, and we need to select the owner's project manager, go through that process, and then develop a committee that's gonna work as a building committee, do that process. So it's pretty laid out, it's, it's, we have to go through that entire process, but we're gonna meet on that on Mon, on Wednesday, this week, to try to plan that out.
So in addition to imploring to, to our parents to come to town meeting, are we gonna do any outreach to council on aging, to memo, to, you know, to really get the town buy-in?
No question. Yep, question.
Because I think that's critical, to get the, the outreach going.
What a lot of districts have done during the building process, I think Needham did it, Milford just did a really good job with it, a couple of other districts, they set up a website, Millis has done a really good job with it too. They set up a website so that everything is there. It's just a building website for the project, and everything that has to do with the project gets sent there, and anyone can just go look, and it really works out well, so we're gonna do that same model.
Um, Chris, did you have something?
So when I think back to the last meeting, the whole project where Memorial was, you know, redone, and the high school, the school was swapped, and it's all a bit of a war, honestly. But I see, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get some clarity on the process in terms of if and when the community has the ability to have input on whether, in terms of the options on the table, in terms of is, you know, the one building, there's a difference in that, the one building behind WeLok being a combined grade building, or, you know, refurbishing Dale Street. I seem to remember that through our own budget process, that it was our own town meeting process that kind of pushed for the memorial to be renovated versus on any building. So I'm just trying to figure out where the public input on what community looks to be the ideal educational format for kids in terms of structures that makes sense.
Yep, so I would say that when those projects were done, that was the old SBA, School Building Authority, not MSBA. Which they characterize as the wild, wild west, where you could essentially do whatever you want as long as you got the money. You really had, you had a lot of leeway to do whatever type of school you wanted, whatever, there would absolutely be public, absolutely be public input on that, but again, MSBA has tightened the reins so much on that process in the last ten years, that they have a lot to say in what, and Michael's built too with MSBA in the new process. So he knows how, how the process is in terms of, they say, no, you can't do this, yes, you can do that, no, you can't do this, so there's, it's just a lot of, and again, they're giving you all that money back, so you have to jump through those hoops, you know? But there'll be definitely public input in that process.
I think just for that awareness, simply just because that prior building project was such a big rallying cry in the community, and there are a lot of those people in the community still that will jump on board to support this. It might be a good communications, you know, to say, here's what the old process was, here's what the new process is, we need you to understand this new process, it's not like the old one, like years and I can get involved. Because I think that there'll be a whole slew of people who are quite active on that project, or still here in town, and that would be the first question that they ask when they're out of town.
So that's what they were saying to us, so the, the board that invited us into this project, the MSBA, has only been in existence for ten years. So they had nothing to do really with the, the old projects, they definitely consider those old projects, that's the way it used to, they have refined it, I think, and made it so much more stringent than that ever was, so. You know, even when we talk about our idea.
They come out and present on the, they'll, they'll come out and present to, to us and, and otherwise on the process, so that people have an opportunity to hear from them on, you know, on what it is they expect and what they'll, because they do take, take into account the community's wishes, it's just not as much.
Right.
Not even very much, maybe, but, so they will come out and, and they'll say to you sometimes, if, if you wanna build a new building, we think you should renovate, we'll pay the percentage of what it would cost to renovate, you do whatever you want with the rest of it. So they, they will come out and explain all that to us as we get farther in the process.
So do they not have any involvement in feasibility study? We decide what we want?
No, they, they direct.
That's all their fees, they, it's all their people.
So they, they choose what we found out?
Yeah.
So that was kind of piggybacking on that, do they take the, like, projections of budget, or like structures in the town, like Parks and Rec, or different things, or is it probably just for the state?
They don't care about what we want to do with Parks and Rec, or, so if we, I think if, if you ask the town, a lot of people in town would say, we'll repurpose that building for a Parks and Rec building, Parks and Rec may not want that, but they, MSBA won't care about that. In fact, they, they, they frown on taking school buildings and repurposing for other things, they, they'll give you extra money to renovate, because that's what they think you ought, they ought to do. I think this building's gonna be an exception, but they, they won't pay much attention, and they just don't get involved in that, that conversation.
So like, community, budget, the all of that?
Right, right.
There is a town master plan that they postponed because they thought the state hospital would definitely want to get that done, but there is, but this election, and you'll see in our, this year, a very master plan committed to the town, that's, that's in theory here trying to control all of this, and it's gonna start.
But the feasibility study for Dale Street is totally separate.
Totally separate.
Very state-run.
When you say behind, possibly behind WeLok, where are we talking? Because you have, if you put on a big, I can get a parent, let's talk about where, see those go. But then you have that one little soccer field where they also play lacrosse, that, but if you put it back on up, you're gonna stack up the train tracks.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but that, that's all part of feasibility.
And have train tracks. Students suck. And having to be, like, hear that train, like, I don't know if the kids can hear it, but if you have Dale Street back up to that, that would be loud.
Yeah.
So where exactly?
It's all part of feasibility.
Right.
It's all part of it. So they look at town-owned land spaces, maybe they're gonna say it up, up the Hospital Hill, who knows? Yep, it's all town-owned land, we'll take a look at. Right.
But this feasibility plan won't be, like, in line with the state hospital, right?
No, no.
They're not, they won't take into account, in like, three years, if we have a huge boom?
They'll take that into consideration. So they, they have a separate company do all the enrollments. They had just focuses on enrollments as part of feasibility, so they'll take all that into consideration. Like, last year I got a number from NASDAQ when they did enrollments of with, with the Dale Street, not the school, but the Forty B project, with the Forty B and without it. You know, so at least companies all do that, they'll take it, they'll take that into consideration.
And the reason I said no is that I didn't, I wanted you to think that the feasibility study in no way will take as long as the feasibility study on the hospital.
So the ballpark you're talking about, in any of the places, the state hospital is three hundred, has the, three, three hundred housing units, and they've got projections that it works, with Dr. Martin Devine, so when the cost would be, they have projections, and so you'll see numbers about that, which is a question.
Okay, if we, and I think the next item on the agenda, it would be the new grant procedure follow-up.
Want to finish the rest of them?
Oh, do you wanna do, yeah. Yeah, let's do the rest of your presentation.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, members of committee, so we have, we have posted the Director of Student Services position that was posted last week.
Sorry, wait, so we're not doing the grant procedure, we're finishing your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You started that, Mr. Muncher.
I did, I just, I didn't hear what you guys, I wasn't sure where we are, I just wanted to keep up.
So I just wanna.
I'm not sorry.
I just wanna recognize the, the members of the, of the committee that'll be doing the screening committee, interviewing the first round of candidates. For the administrators, Nat Vaughn, Steve Grenham, and Missy Villozaro, she'll be coming back right after our break. Our community member is Chief Meaney. Our staff people, Gina Delon, who's actually an administrator now, Nancy Giammarco, Melissa Devine, Mary Salamoni, Christine Dardia, Stephanie Worthley, and then our parents, Christine Barney, Kate Torme, Tanya Sullivan, and Carrie, Carrie Trump. So very similar to the group we had last year, we had a wonderful group, you know, very intense interviews, I know that feedback I got from folks that interviewed, that was the most intense interview they've ever had. We, we asked them a lot of questions and a lot of follow-up questions, and we wanted to make sure we had the right person. So, also going on at the same time, parallel to all of this, is I spoke with the consultant that's doing all of the recruiting for us. So spoke with her for a while, and last week, and so she has been starting to make calls and try to get a sense of what we're looking for as a director, and what we're looking for in that position, what type of experience, et cetera, communities, those kinds of things. So that, that recruitment has started, started today, and they're just gonna, as soon as they start getting names in, they're gonna, you know, let us know as well. So the closing date is at the, in the middle of January, I think it's the twelfth, I'll double check. But, you know, we're gonna get that group together, start to look at questions, and, and then once that group recommends X amount of candidates, it's a school committee appointment. It's a school committee appointment, so they, you know, you folks will have a say in who the final candidate is and who gets appointed in that position, so. Still have a little ways to go, but our goal is still to finish this by February break. All right? Student recognition, excuse me, district recognition, I have my list of things I want to recognize, I was right in front of me here. So just a few things, our senior Julie Lattei competed in the Olympic trials in the short track speed skating this weekend, which was really cool, seeing her on NBC Sports TV. Friday, it was Friday and Saturday too, it was really cool. She was the youngest one in her heat, so really proud of the, the work that she did with that, it's really impressive. Last Friday, our eighth grade students spent the day at volunteering Christmas in the city, and the feedback was really positive on that, great to have our kids go and help out and, and support that, that project. All of our schools participated in the Hour of Code in the last few weeks, so every school did differently, some did it as part of their library media time, some did it in the classroom, some as, Blake, the entire school at the same time did it, and it really tried to promote computer science with our kids. And if you saw some of the things on Twitter, some really good feedback on that, our kids did wonderful. Spaghetti with Santa was a big hit as usual, Doug. Doug told me over five hundred tickets this year, so thanks, everybody that came to that and all the volunteers. And last Friday, one thing I just want to recognize, Steve Grenham at Dale Street, you know, one of the things that he instituted here in the last couple of years, which is really great, is a positive referral breakfast. So it's really catching kids doing well and being good and then he invites all those kids and their families to breakfast every quarter. So we had ninety-five students and their families last Friday for breakfast and it was just really a good time, very positive. And kids really enjoy making that phone call home to their parents from the principal's office, telling them that they were recognized for doing something really good. So great culture builder and just want to recognize that excitement going on over there. That's all I have in that part, I'm Jeff.
Yeah, Steve and the, the teachers and that, that team he's built over there really done an amazing job with Dale Street. I mean, it's, it's always been a good school, but it's always been the kind of school where we as school committee members hear a lot, you know, Christmas parties, cocktail parties, you know, on the soccer field about, you know, what's going on at Dale Street. And I think he's, not just Steve, but, you know, under his leadership, that, that really has turned the corner. And so parents now, you know, when, when my kids were your kids' age a long time ago, you know, we worried a little bit about going to Dale Street and you worried what that culture was going to be like and it just didn't seem to fit with the rest of the ethos of the town. And I think that's really, you know, Steve, Steve has just done an incredible job leading that school back sort of into the fold, if you will.
Yeah, teachers have done a wonderful job there too. I mean, it's really, the whole culture's changed, it's really super good. Thank you for that. So now we're going to go back to old business?
Now we're going to go back to old business with the new grant procedure.
Did, so that's, that's the one document that both you and the Board of Selectmen have to approve? So once we get it to a place where you're okay with it, which will, I don't know when that is, then the Board of Selectmen can approve that as well and we'll do it, I don't know if we have a joint vote or whatever, but that's a requirement from the government that we have to have this in place. Did anyone have any questions or changes they want to make on that?
The only question I still have is, so does this mean, we haven't previously approved every grant that came out of the district?
Correct.
You have, but we as a board have not. Does this mean every grant now needs to come before us and since we only meet, you know, a few weeks, are we going to slow things down? I mean, a lot of times those grants come together an hour before you have to hit the submit button.
So one of the things we're concerned about, Chris, by definition, MSBA is a grant, right?
Right.
So now does MSBA's, this whole program that we just talked about, have to fall under those guidelines? So we have to get some legal opinions on some of that.
Well, MSBA is arguably a reimbursement, speaking as a lawyer.
It considers a grant program. Like I said, the state considers, so that, how does that fit in, right? I mean, that, that's what we've got to try to...
Well, right now the supply is written only applying to federal grants, but you told me it will also apply to state grants.
Right.
So...
And local grants.
Yeah, so my big, yeah, so if we have to, my biggest concern is, again, a lot of grants come together, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into them.
Sure.
And you hit, you, you're, you're working down to the wire and they, you know, it's a midnight deadline or a six P.M. deadline and you hit submit at five fifty-nine. I hate to have us be in the way of that. I mean, is there a way that we can approve a grant application, approve the, somebody, give somebody approval to apply for a grant without having to review the application? So that we're not in the way of teachers innovating and going up?
I think it's probably something Michael and Joy should do because the town has to have an opinion on that too.
Right.
You know, I think maybe you guys get together on that, Michael, and talk that through and then I can bring it back again.
Yeah, I mean, that's my, I mean, we, I don't want to be in the way.
No, I hear you.
There's hardly ever been a grant that I've said, "Why, I can't remember." I can't remember in my history of school committee service ever saying, "Why in the heck did we apply for that grant?" Because you, I guess, because you're a gate, you've been the gatekeeper.
Right.
Or Bob has been the gatekeeper. So I, I just, you know, I'd be pleased to have the, the policy say that we need to give approval to somebody who wants to apply. But I, I don't want to be in a position of having to read the grant applications because we'll never get one in on time.
Okay, we'll have, we'll talk to the town side about that. And so many of our federal grants are entitlement grants anyway.
Right.
You know, they're...
Yeah.
But still, that's, there's a few of them. Who knows now, they might not even exist after a while, but...
Well, maybe it's just as an entitlement grant, so.
I'm sorry?
Right, no longer entitlement, can't say that. We're not the CDC.
Forgot about that, yeah. So we'll bring that, we'll keep this on the agenda and we'll, we'll bring it back again and once Michael has that conversation with Joy and see where we are. The student activity policy, so this is going to count as a first reading. So we'll post on the website after you folks give me any feedback now or we have that, that period for a few, till the January eighth meeting. The subcommittee should probably meet prior to the January eighth meeting, we have a couple of other things to look at too. I know, Chris, you have some comments on that?
I, I sent some recommendations to Michael, I think he's going to just, it's just language cleanup. I know this is a model policy, it doesn't, like, the titles don't fit with the titles we have.
Right.
So we should change those.
All right, we can make those changes.
And we also, I mean, sometimes those, you know, those titles change too, so we may want to make an allocation in here for saying, or, you know, whoever's in a similar position.
Okay. So we'll make those changes that you recommended before we put it on the website. That makes sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, it was just some of the language changes there. Anything else on that, on the student activity? We spent a lot of time on our last meeting, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. And Madam Chair, we have no donations to approve this one. We do have some for next month.
James.
Am I you?
You're up.
Finally, James. So as we are approaching the holiday break, the student council started our candy cane sale at lunches today. Students send a candy cane to their friends along with a note. The Special Olympics bocce tournament is fast approaching, January twenty-eighth, that Rockland tie. So the council is finishing up the registration logistics for that and getting participants there. And finally, a senior at the high school approached the council several weeks ago with a idea for a fundraiser for an elementary school in Texas that he has personal ties with, was affected by the hurricane. So we're working with him on that and that's still in its beginning stages, but that's what we're looking to in the future. Thanks, James.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Nothing else except to acknowledge it's a stressful time for seniors, so we have them in our thoughts. And it's stressful as we approach college, kids coming home. Again, I'm in a different place in life than some of you. I know when kids come home for the first time after the freedom of college, that can be a pretty stressful time too, so.
Yes, no doubt.
I've got that in mind, there's a lot of folks, as my friends and neighbors start to face those issues. I wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa.
Happy all of it.
And I think that's it.
Just a good day.
I'm going to end the war on Hanukkah too. Well, if there was a war, apparently there was a war on Christmas, so we're going to, we've ended that. Okay, and the war, sorry.
Excuse me.
Nothing else?
Nothing, nothing.
I think that's checked, it's like poker, checked.
All right, so we, if there's, the future agenda items will include the fiscal year nineteen budget, the high school handbook and revisions, the student activity policy and the new grant procedure.
And Metro West.
And the Metro West, right, with Susan Call.
Can I just ask, Jeff, can you, I'm on the budget subcommittee, right?
Yeah.
You are.
Can, can we meet with the...
Don't leave me alone out here.
Can we, can we make an appointment to meet with the warrant committees, subcommittee sometime?
Sure.
Maybe before our next meeting, just to try to get that kicked off.
We can do that.
So our next meeting is Monday, January eighth, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion?
The Metro West presentation will be at that one?
Will be at that meeting, January eighth, right, right.
Although if, if Mrs. Call, we may know, we'll try to get a little bit better lead time, yeah.
Yeah, it's the family thing, that's all.
Right.
I move adjournment.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're watching Medfield TV Community Shows.